Welcome everyone to the April 25th, 2018 Regular School Committee Meeting, Neshoba Regional School District. I'm calling this order at 6 o'clock. And our first item is Citizens' Comments. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to make a citizen? A citizen just walked in. Would you like to make a comment? Okay. I've got a couple of updates. Superintendent Evaluations. I'm just waiting on one of you. You know who you are and you're gonna send it to me. Thank you for that, everyone, for getting it in. I appreciate that.
It's not me this time.
No, it's not. You were a very, very good school committee member. The Annual Town Meeting DEX have been created. We're using the same format that we've used for the past two years. It's worked. Pat has taken and created one for each of the towns. And I think everybody got their respective towns. It's also been sent to the town administrators. And I think the FINCOMs or Board of Selectmen or something.
I don't know about that.
Lita, you know.
Town clerks.
Town clerks. Perfect. And they'll disseminate it. So just make sure you're familiar with the document for the town meetings. Also, while we're not gonna finalize the date, I want you guys to start thinking about our annual goal-setting meeting. We need to wait for the full committee to be seated. But we're thinking June 20th would be that date. So just make a note of it's tentative right now. Because again, we need to make sure that the full committee and our new member, whomever that may be, is able to make that date. Other than that, I don't have any other updates. Almost anybody have any questions for me about anything? And with that, we're gonna turn it over to the high school. I think, is it Paul?
Yeah, I will start with Paul. And I was supposed to be the medical to tee up Mrs. Carter.
So happy and proud to be back here again this month. Last month, we were the choir. And this month, it gives me a great pride to introduce to you some award-winning directors and film creators. Will Andronico, Jack Deppenbach, and Ben Myers, sophomore. Will and Jack are both seniors. They have worked with Mrs. Carter, Jackie Carter, who is a video teacher, video production, broadcasting, and journalism. She teaches on multiple disciplines at Neshoba. And she's worked with them to create a film called Lovestruck. You're gonna see a trailer for the film tonight. It's an award-winning film. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Carter.
So I'll let them do most of the talking. I'll just kind of introduce them. We put most of the day today.
Come on up. All you guys, come on up. We need to see you.
And you can sweep the chairs up or you can stand up.
Jack, why didn't you tell me, Jack? Why didn't you tell me?
They're very modest.
Clearly.
Very modest. So I teach video production. And I've known these guys for a few years now. And last year, both of them really impressed me. And so each year, I teach, one aspect is short film. But I thought, and they did make one, but I thought they could do something even bigger and better. I do submit videos that I think are really high-quality to the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences Contest. So it's like a student Oscar. And last year, we won for a commercial. And then I thought, these guys were perfect for this. And so we brainstormed a little bit. They started this fall. And they ended up winning. So I'm gonna let them tell you about their story. But I'm just super proud of them.
So I guess initially, it was probably about a year ago now that Mrs. Carter came to us with this idea to enter into this contest, to think about an idea for a short film. It's a short film, but they call it long-form because that's the longest piece of art that they see. And so we took last fall and spent about five months making a film, scripting, writing, editing, all of that. And it came into this final product, which we're really proud of.
So we, basically, the whole premise is that there's a kid in a high school who is struggling with his sexuality. And he wants to come out to his friends. So he brings them all out to dinner. And he comes out to them. And they all abandon him. And basically, a bunch of bullying ensues. There's a lot of conflict. And it was really hard writing this. Because this took about two months to write. Because Neshoba is such a great community, just in general. So it was really accepting. And it was just really hard to put this in a whole different situation, a whole different setting than Neshoba. We had to take a bunch of outside resources and just try and compile the best way to tell this really special story that can relate to almost anybody going through any struggle. And we just really wanted to create something big with a lot of effort before we left high school. And I think this was the best way to do it and best way to spread a good message.
Let me show the trailer real quick. And then we'll let you guys talk just a little bit more so they can kind of see. See that?
It's just doing it.
Oh, fantastic. Thanks, Lita.
Should we sit down?
No, stand.
Is there audio?
Yes.
It is.
That's the audio right now.
It's supposed to sound like that.
It's a heartbeat.
We premiered it all day today in every period. So kids could come down with their classes and see it. And then we had a talk back with them. So it was really, it was great. They got to ask questions. Some classes even saw it, some teachers saw it before and then added to the curriculum. And there was discussions tomorrow, etc. So pretty good. So I don't know. We talked a little bit about your inspiration.
I guess some of the inspiration came from how we don't live in a very mean community.
Really? I said it. I said it. Go ahead. You don't.
Yeah. It's hard to, I guess, think of something challenging. So we wanted to challenge ourselves. And so going outside of Neshoba was the way to do that, especially with this topic.
Yes, like shooting and scheduling also is a struggle, as well as like trying to figure out how to do it. Because there's not much bullying at Neshoba, kind of like that. And like getting 10 kids together outside of school, like and organizing that consistently to get people like show up and stuff like that is a big struggle in its own. And it happened quite consistently. Like the people wouldn't show up, stuff like that. And we had to work around that. And it was, it was pretty, like, I don't know what to say. It's just like, it wasn't really easy to get everyone together. I have to give massive props to all the actors, though, because we just kind of asked around. And people just hopped in, not knowing what they're getting into. This is such like a huge time commitment for them. And they just did it out of the goodness of their hearts. And they all did such an incredible job. It's, it still shocks me as I watched it seven times today, just how amazing the job they did, even though this was all volunteer work. It was just incredible.
Just sort of like an example of how much time they put in. There was one day where, in the morning, we filmed for about two or three hours. Then our lead actor, Quinn O'Hagan, went to go give blood. And then he came back to film some more. Which is like, it's just crazy. They put in so much work for our movie. And it's, it really props to them.
It's a lot to ask for them, say, hey, can you help us film this for the next three months? It's, it is a big time commitment. But I couldn't be happier with the result. They, everybody did such a great job.
And you two are going on, you're going to college soon?
Yes.
And what are you majoring in?
So I'm going to college at, I'm going to BU to double-major in journalism and filmmaking.
Awesome.
And so this is a passion project. But like, it's always been our passion to make movies and to make films. Like Jack and I have been working together on silly videos and movies for like seven years. And so just to have it sort of culminate into this as our final product for high school was really like awesome.
Yeah, like we kind of needed to do something like this before high school ended. Like I'm going to University of South Carolina to study business and film. And just having something like this under our belt, even though it wasn't like funded or anything, it was just a great experience to have, to be able to say that I did this in high school. I'm able to put this on my resume. I'm able to apply this later in life, whether I'm working in marketing or if I'm just a full-time filmmaker.
Where can we see the full film?
It's on, I tweeted it from the Cheekton Press. But I can send out a link that we can watch.
Great.
Sure.
Thank you.
And so then, really, kind of the last thing is that, the wonderful thing is they did win the award, the Boston-New England Chapter. And what makes it even more special is that the New England Chapter is the biggest chapter. They get the most submissions from anywhere in the country, which is really interesting to me. I would have thought Los Angeles or that area would get more. But Boston-New England gets the most. And usually, in the categories, there are honorable mentions in their category. There weren't even any honorable mentions that even came close to theirs, their film. So it was really big props to them. They're going on to compete in October. We'll find out if their film wins a national award. And so that will be livestreamed sometime in the very beginning of October.
That is so cool.
Yeah.
So impressed. Anybody have any? I don't even know. I just wanna forget the rest of the meeting. We're gonna go off and have kids and talk. You know. Oh my gosh, that's so cool. Does anybody have any? Neil?
Great job. I look forward to seeing it. Quinn let this go to his head.
Quinn was dancing around the auditorium today, so.
Quinn and your mom. I saw her name on there.
Yeah. She had, they have, they're both in it. His mom and his dad are in the movie.
Oh, yeah, I'm gonna go watch that.
Yeah, we just kind of asked them last minute. And they just turned out to do such a great job.
Yeah, they did.
My dad got really into it. I was surprised by that.
That's awesome.
It's fantastic.
Oh my goodness. Thank you so much. We're so proud of you.
Nice, congratulations.
Thank you for having us.
Oh, come back.
Thank you very much for writing.
Take care. Thank you. Isabel, what do you got for us?
Now that spring sports have actually started.
Yeah, right?
Right? Okay, I'm actually gonna start with news from the arts department. So tonight is the annual Fine and Performing Arts Showcase in the library at the high school. Evening will feature work from all of the visual arts courses the high school offers, as well as a coffeehouse field with open night tonight. Throughout the evening, students will perform in small groups or solos, while visitors can walk around, critique artwork. Students write up explanations of their art and what was required of them, etc. And enjoy snacks created by the culinary foods department as well, and their classes. On Sunday, select members of our middle school music programs will perform at the Central Mass Honors District Ensembles. We have 23 middle school students throughout the district who are chosen to be a part of the groups. And the concert is sold out and will take place at the Blackstone Millville Regional High School. On Sunday, May 6th, the Neshoba Symphony Band will present their spring concert, classic originals for band, a passport to the world of music. The concert will feature pieces such as Armenian dances, La Fiesta Mexicana, Alhambra March, among many others. The concert begins at 3:00 PM in the high school auditorium. Onto athletics. It's been a slow start to the spring season due to the weather and field conditions throughout central Massachusetts. However, we have been able to get some games in over the last week. And we have a very busy May coming up because of all those rescheduled games. The baseball team is 4-1 and doing very well in the league. The softball team is young this year, but had a big win over league rival Marlboro yesterday. Marlboro is at the top of the league. And Neshoba came out fighting and beat them 14-4.
Oh, wow.
So they, they took. The track teams opened up their season with wins over Marlboro yesterday, both boys and girls track. The boys' lacrosse team is 14-2 and lost a heartbreaker to Littleton yesterday, 9-8 in overtime. The girls' lacrosse team is 2-3 and playing well. The girls' tennis team is 3-0. And the boys' tennis team is 4-1. And the unified track team is excited to have their first meet tomorrow versus North Middlesex and Leavenburg. Other Neshoba events, Neshoba participated in the National Day of Silence to raise awareness of the effects of anti-LGBTQ name-calling, bullying, and harassment in schools. The day included a screening of the award-winning student film Lovestruck, which chronicles the difficulties gay students faces. Neshoba will also host Earth Day activities this coming Friday, including student gardening, trash collection, and other. We have a hike that's organized as well, mostly done by Mr. Kastner and one of the science teachers. And lastly, Neshoba DECA is at Nationals this week. And just had a Neshoba team placed in the top 18 in the world in their category. Very exciting. So that's.
What was, do you know what the group's project was?
The group, personally. They had a project which was about diagnosing, kind of like an athletic trainer app for your phone. So diagnosing problems, it sounds like. I don't know the full details, but they obviously, very involved paper and project. I believe they did one of the longer papers. So I think it was 10 to 30 pages, I forget. But they're very involved. And they're, you know, they, DECA started practicing for just the states and regional competitions in December. So this has been a long process. They're both seniors, so I know it means a lot to them.
That is so cool.
Yeah, they're in Atlanta, so getting out of the state for a little while.
That's really cool.
Anybody have any questions for Isabel? No? Thank you. Appreciate that. And the superintendent's report is there.
Yeah, just one thing, because of course, we had last week away for our spring break. I just wanna talk about budget. Because of course, even though the actual budget process itself is wrapped up in terms of creation of the budget, there's all the work that follows that. So the, I think that you've already gotten your budget books. If not, Lita's got them there. So make sure that you take yours home with you tonight. The pamphlets have also gone out. They've also been all mailed out. Now, we're in the process of streamlining, making final changes, any staffing changes that need to be made. That's the work that we're doing right now. I would say that everything's going really quite smoothly. Of course, you can imagine, as an example of this kind of thing, working the pre-K and K with all the changes that happened there. You know, we had our final meeting on that, I believe, yesterday afternoon, actually. And I think the last of that's all been ready. So I think we're in a really good, good place. This is a natural component to our work every year. So I wouldn't want anyone to think that this is different than any other year. It's not. It's just that this year, I think we are so organized and so structured. We're hoping that we have all staffing changes done before May 15th. The date on the contract is June 15th, but we're gonna be well ahead of that. And this is not on my report. But remember, about a year ago, I said, we're gonna start to streamline all of our files. And I think I showed you a picture. So this is what it looks like now. And it was a project that was much, much larger than I had ever anticipated. And you'll recall that we had files in the freezers downstairs. You'll remember that. And we had files kind of in all these odd closets around the area and whatnot. And we pulled them all together. We had, I think I had mentioned to you that we brought in a kind of a truck trailer load of filing cabinets that we'd gotten very, very cheap, put them downstairs in a single room where the extended day used to be. And so now, I've just got tons and tons of filing cabinets. We finished the last of it over the April break. And all of those boxes that were from here to the ceiling have all been organized. Our files have been purged. It's just, it's a beautiful, if you're into that kind of thing, it's a beautiful thing right now. That room looks amazing. And so many people think, I mean, our nurses' things are down there. HR is down there. Our stuff is down there from the superintendent's office. Sped is down there. Everything is organized, labeled appropriately. And it just, it just looks fantastic down there. Accounting is down there. So in one central location. And we called in a shredder and basically shredded, I think, about 115 boxes, 120 boxes of files that needed to be shredded. So that was a huge project that's just finally all wrapped up.
Good news. Neil, one question. Is that a secure area?
Yeah, yes. Yeah, it is. We've got special locks. We had special locks put on it. And our cabinets are also locked. So we've got keys for every one of those cabinets. And then the doors are locked. And then there's the exterior doors.
So like HR has their own key for their cabinet type of thing?
Yeah. They actually, every filing cabinet has its own. Yeah.
That's it?
Yeah.
So what did you do with the space where they were in?
Well, the freezers, we took out. You know, you'll recall that we had some mice issues and such in there, right? And that's all cleared up now. And so we literally stripped out all of those freezers and made space for the extended, additional space for the extended day. And so it's beautiful down there now. So they've, you know, as you all know, well, maybe, actually, maybe you don't all know. We did a series of reconfiguration of space down in the Emerson, right off of the gym space there. And this is one of the areas of the extended day when we took them out of this building. We moved all children out of this building. Any children programs that were running in this building, we moved out and over to Emerson. And that was one of them. So that's, it looks very, very nice. If you ever want a quick tour, I'm happy to tour you down through there and you can take a look at what we've done. I'm really proud of the efforts. It's, it looks fabulous. It really does.
Alrighty.
That's it?
Thank you. Next up, we're just buzzing through here.
We are.
Interim Business and Operations Manager Report. Ms. Pat, she's gonna take us through the FY '18 Budget Review, including revolving accounts in the court report. Go ahead, Pat. I'm sorry, I gotta ask.
Oh, okay.
Sidebar, go ahead.
Okay. So first up, I have the revolving fund balances for the third quarter. So there really hasn't been very much change, except that you can see probably more of a fluctuation in the revenue and expenditures flowing through there because our budget process has changed. So I think, you know, this is much easier to manage. And it makes more sense in presentation as to how we're using our revolving funds. Does anybody have any questions about any of the funds?
Yep.
So I do have one question. And it's just going off of recollection. So if you could just clarify.
Sure.
I thought at one point in time, you could not have negative balances in certain funds. Is it, I guess, is it certain funds? Is it all revolving funds?
Well.
And is that something that we then, at the end of the year, because of forensic audit?
Well, I don't know that we can't have a negative balance because it would affect I E and D. They would reduce our E and D by any negative balances in these accounts. So.
Right. Specifically, I recall something going back to the high school where we had the banquet. Remember, there was a banquet room that was in there? And that was running at a deficit. And we were told at the time that that was not allowed to run at a deficit. And I can't remember the circumstances and all this other stuff around that.
I don't recall.
Anyway.
But I can look into that.
Yeah.
Any questions? Gate receipts. That number is reduced significantly? I mean, is there a, did we put that back into the fields? Because that was up at over 100,000. It's like 165,000. So is that a?
Yes, we appropriated funds from there in the fiscal year '18.
And they go back into the athletic fields? How does that?
Well, the budget spells out in detail how the funds were spent. So I mean, I don't have that detail in front of me right now. But there were various things, most of them related to the fields. Because that's, that's basically how we try to keep the expenditures in the revolving accounts as close to what their purpose, you know, as far as use of the revenues coming in.
And I'm just a little curious. How does CPR now run?
That we, we've been looking into that. And I think it's an expenditure that was reclassified incorrectly. But it's, it's difficult to identify that because that program was something that was run outside, by people outside the district. The CPR, it used to be run by Ian Barrow, I think.
Oh, yeah.
So it's from outside the district.
So it's part of the EMT program.
This will be something that will be closed this year because this isn't active anymore.
Oh.
Can you refresh our memory as to which funds we collect? And then we hold them until the following year to expend them?
Yeah, sure. That would be the circuit breaker account. The funds that we take in for this year are used and appropriated for next year. So '18's revenues, they use in fiscal year '19.
Anything else? No? Okay. Thanks, Pat. And the quarterly report.
And the quarterly report. Does anybody have any questions about that? It's either getting a little close to the end. Now, I want you to keep in mind that this is as of the end of March. There are some other expenditures that have come through on some of these accounts since then. I've projected what I could, you know, to the end of the year. But still, this is, this could still change.
And some of these balances, you anticipate, you kind of project it.
Right. I could, I could tell you some of them that we'll have that amount of money. But then there are some others that will be lower than that. So this is just an estimate. Where I'm projecting expenditures, it's, it's not fictitious, but it's just an estimate at this point.
Is the $40,000 for Florence, the teacher that we picked up partway through the year? Is that what?
Yes.
Can you say a few words about the special ed and what you attribute that being projected surplus at the moment?
Well, there are a couple of different things. There are prepaid expenditures that are committed to that line as well.
That are not shown right now.
They wouldn't be shown until the end of the year. And this, again, could change.
Right. So perhaps we may be prepaying several hundred thousand dollars as opportunity allows at the end of the year from this particular line.
So with that in mind, do you anticipate us putting any more money back into E and D at the end of the year?
Yes, I do.
Has that shifted at all in the past two months? I mean, are you trending? You seen any trends up or down from where you thought we were gonna be a couple of months ago?
A lot of, we've had some, a couple of facilities things come up. So maybe it's trended down a little bit.
Okay.
So again, as you can see, I'm not projecting any surplus in the facilities department.
Yeah.
And that includes utilities and everything. So we've had some, some items that have come up. And we've addressed.
Substitute teachers are negative. So do we have a, because I know we've worked a lot about substitute teachers and putting it out there. Now, is this negative? I mean, are substitute teachers pretty much equal to last year? Or do we have a lot more of them this year, like long-term, maybe? Or is it because we put? Or is it because we put the price up that we lost them?
That, that again is a moving target as to when people, you know, we have some people that are on maternity leave.
I'd say mat leaves, yeah.
There are two lines there. There are the everyday subs, and then there are the long-term subs. So that's, I've projected what I think we'll use based on our new rate.
Oh.
To the end. And I try to be as conservative as I can, but this is what I'm...
And do you ever mapped it out to see if we have a consistent number or...
I've looked at the numbers, yeah.
Are they, are they pretty consistent? Or are we rising up?
Yeah, surprisingly enough, they are pretty consistent.
Yeah. So we could probably get a better rate, a better field report next year?
Probably, yes. Because I budgeted differently.
Okay.
This year.
Good. Also, Mark?
Given that we have had unexpected facilities things, do you anticipate you might need transfers before June to aid?
Poten, I think potentially, you know, because we've had a couple of larger ones that we just, again, you just don't, don't see them coming, you know? And we've been just dealing with them as they've come along. So I think that there's a potential that we, we may have to ask for that.
All good?
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Pat. Actually, you're up again. I'm up again. So the OPEB trust agreement. So I'm gonna let you, we talked about this in...
Okay. So we're, we're, maybe at the point where we're going to put this at rest for at least 90 days. So I hope you've had an opportunity to review the declaration of trust for the other post-employment benefits liability. If you haven't, I suggest that you do. Take a look at it. It's presented today for your review, not for a vote. Bearing any, barring any objection, this document will be presented to the trustee, Victoria Charia, who's appointed. She's our trustee for, for this trust. For adoption, we will then file the document with the clerk of the district. The clerk of the district is our superintendent. And the agreement will become effective 90 days from the date of the, of the adoption of, by the trustee. So if this were to happen tomorrow, 90 days from tomorrow, this trust becomes fully executed. You'll have an OPEB trust fund.
So you don't, what you need from us is to make sure, and it's a pretty sizable document?
It's not that lengthy, actually.
Oh. Actually, no, it's not. Has everybody read it? Do you want more time to read it? Do you have any concerns about it?
And this was drafted by our council. Standard.
So if not, why don't, do you wanna give, do we, do we wanna give people more time? Or do you feel like you've had enough time to ad nauseam, ad nauseam, ad nauseam, ad nauseam?
They may wanna take a vote right now.
No, there's no vote needed.
You, you don't need to vote. You just...
No. Because we already did all the voting, and it, the only thing we need to do is if somebody has a concern, then raise it. And otherwise, I think we can just move this along. And again, I say Jan Goddessman, never have to hear this again. No one knows what I'm talking about when I say that. But, so there's a, there's a, an editor of a local paper, and she said to me, "I am so tired of hearing about everybody's OPEB, and I know we need them, but oh my gosh, because we're not the only ones that have gone through this long laborious task." And I know I've heard from some parents, like, "When are you gonna get that OPEB done? And why is it important?" And then you explain it, and they go, "Oh." So at any rate, thank you.
Thank you.
And again, you know...
Took too long.
Yeah, right? Really appreciate your, your support and guidance on that. If anybody does have a question or a concern, we'll give you two days and, and let me know, and then I'll funnel them to PAC. She may have to send it to council. She may not have the answers.
Why don't we just consider this first reading, and if there are any answers that need to come forth, I come back the next meeting, and then we can call it settled.
Why don't we just, instead of dragging our feet, read it over the next two days? And if we have any questions and concerns, I mean, I think at this point...
Well, what, for, for it to be filed with the state?
Right.
One of the dates is August 1st, the, the next date coming up. We just missed the first one. It's only a couple of times a year that they actually, they file, so...
Yeah, but it, but it would still be something to languish with us. So give you a couple of days. I mean, we've been down this road. It's only nine pages. I was looking at something else clearly. Neil?
So the only question I would have is if there is a question, it would be one of us objecting to the legal format of this, because we've already taken the vote on the establishment of the trust. And I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but none of us, to my knowledge, are interns here.
Exactly.
So I don't see how we're going to object to any legal mess-up or something.
But because we're a democracy, take the two days, review it, let me know if you have questions, and if you do, we'll get them answered. But I think it's kind of pro forma at this point. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. New business policy. You guys, what is this, two years now?
No, a year and a half.
Oh, just a year and a half. I, I do, I look at the words and I'm like, wow. But I'm gonna turn it over to Susan.
She's ahead of schedule.
And she's way ahead of schedule.
Uh, so I sent you the chart for Section E. Do you want me, it's a little lengthier than last time. Do you want me to go through one by one?
Yeah, why don't you? Because I, I think we have the time, and I think they're important.
Sure. So for the safety program policy, EB, we decided, or it's our recommendation to keep our policy because we thought that actually the, the mask form was too limiting. So we wanted to make sure that there was more flexibility with the instructional programming. Are there any questions?
I just have a question.
Yeah, about when it says, looking at the actual, and this, this is sort of a global question for all of them, that are you going to update from the original to indicate that it was reviewed? Because it was adopted on April 26, 2001. When it goes into its final form, will there be something to indicate that it was reviewed in 2018?
It will say, it, it, when we approve the entire manual?
Yes.
That date will be, yeah.
Okay.
So there, Dorothy, from what I understand, says that they're sort of pulling away from having the dates at the bottom of each policy?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So...
So it'll, that, it'll be understood that when we approve it in its entirety, once the whole process is through, excuse me, that's the date that will soon follow.
But if they pull the dates out from the bottom, how will you know? Because you have to review them every so many years, right?
I don't know about that. We have some that are going back to 2001.
One.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, no, I, I get that because Neil very nicely gave us 165, what we would do at the time. But how would you, how would we keep track of that if they're not dated? Because I think every five years, we're supposed to review them, right?
We should.
We would know that all of them had been...
This year.
That, that, yeah. Well, hopefully it'll be, I don't, it won't be this, I think, next year. We won't be done this year, yeah. But there's a pretty big wellness, see that sort of, I think, yeah. So it won't be done this year, but we have until the end of next year. And actually, I think we have, we have three full years, right? So we, we secured their services, I think, mid-year last year because of the vote that we took, so...
Well, Nicole was here.
Yeah, so it was mid-year last year.
Oh, okay.
Nicole was here till May.
Okay.
Right, yeah. Steve J. was here.
Okay. So we didn't have pest management policy?
Uh, no, no.
No, we did not.
There you have it. Hopefully you liked it.
Is this as a result of seeing the mics in my, my office the other night?
I just think it's prudent, don't you, Neil? Okay, keep going.
Yeah, and then so we just combined our policy with the mask policy for the first aid, added language that clarified that illnesses should include or may include infectious diseases, or that they should be reported to the school district physician in accordance with the law. And then to add in that the school nurse or another trained person be responsible for administering the first aid. Remove unnecessary language about the reporting of extreme illnesses to the principal. And then specify that accident forms be filed with the superintendent or a designated. Good?
Yep.
Okay. There's a typo on this next one. It bothered me. It should be comprehensive policy. So the EBC emergency plan, we just, we recommend adopting the mask policy, which is surprisingly more comprehensive than ours. We found that more often than not, ours were...
Wordy, yeah.
Very, very lengthy. No recommended changes for the emergency closings. Our policy's matched. For EC, the building and grounds management, adoption of the mask policy, that's more geared towards regional districts. So it just talks more about the super, which Brooke does, superintendent's responsibility to work with member communities to develop those plans. ECA, building and ground security, so adopt the mask one. That's a pretty new one. But cross-reference the AC AF, which is the one about security cameras in schools. And add the following two sen, so those two sentences were in our policy but not in the mask one. So each district building will be appropriately signed to aid the public in visiting our schools. And each building and grounds will be appropriately signed to inform the public of surveillance. And then the mask policy allows for the security, so you'll like this. It says, the mask policy allows for the security of funds and valuable records. So that's in that policy. Everything's nice, under lock and key. The vandalism one, we adopt the mask policy, which we didn't have. The security cameras in schools, adopt the mask policy with the addition of the cross-reference to ECA that I just mentioned. No change in EDC because we have matching policies and we, we're happy with it. The EEA, bus transportation, it, just as a change in coding. Mask has EEA listed as a student transportation services policy, and bus transportation was listed as EEAA. So that was just coding. And then the EEAA, bus transportation, same thing. The, the title that they have is walkers and riders, and specifies to whom transportation would be provided. And the rest is pretty straightforward. It's more, it's kind of like that class size policy. It's like more open-ended, the one, the one that we recommend adopting. And then the EEAE, they're matched. And then the two EEA, it's like E...
Right.
EEAEA and EEAEA1, we didn't have. So it's adoption of those two policies.
I was so surprised that we did not have A1. And E, and the one above it.
And then the EEAEC, they were matching policies, student transportation and private So it's the adoption of the mask policy. It matched our policy when you delete, that there is some, like, it's like one of those cases where it's a policy that has a bunch of bulleted things underneath. So if you delete four to six, four, bullets four, five, and six, that basically talks about the maximum number of passages and vehicle, the use of seatbelts, and the lack of compensation, excuse me, for drivers. And it just kind of says, you need to comply with state law. So it, it sort of...
Streamlines it a little bit.
Yes, thank you, thank you, yeah. We thought it was unnecessary to have those bullets. This next one is the EEAJ, the idling policy. What's this? Wait, the, a combination of the two. So our, our EEAJR and EEAJ for mask is gonna be combined, or we recommend that it should be combined because, again, this mask policy was more comprehensive. Ours had some reference to research about environmental impact of idling that we kind of thought maybe didn't, there was no, like, there was reference to the research, but there was no citation of the source. So just taking that out, we thought, we didn't think it should be a part of that policy. And then eliminating the idling protocol because the EEAJR1 is sort of embedded in that new EEAJ1. Free and reduced priced food services was a matching policy. And then the adoption of the mask policy from August of 2017 is the meal charge policy that I think we talked about last spring. So...
Great. I didn't see that one.
There's a link to it because it wasn't there in the packet that Dorothy, that when we, when we ran over this essay, doesn't make sense, as a supplement. Can you get to the link?
Oh, I'm sorry, one second. Oh, I'm going to the wrong document again.
If you go to the chart, there should be a link embedded in it?
Yeah.
The policy manual, Section E, proposed changes. If you, I didn't test the link.
It looks like it's just going to the main page, like, not a specific policy.
Oh. Huh. Rats.
Don't you just have your full section pieces?
Well, yeah.
I know, but the... You wanna throw it in another time?
We, we could approve this in form with the exception of the FQ.
Okay.
And, and, yeah.
All right. We could do that.
It's, it's here. I mean, you don't wanna have to search for it, so...
But you know what?
I have it right here.
But that's the easiest thing to do, throw it on the next agenda.
I'll send this to you.
And then, if, are you okay with policies?
Um, not buses.
Not buses?
Only because right now, everybody gets picked up, even if they live right next door to the school. And this says, students living more than a mile from school, when they're picked up, grades one through three, grades four to five, they have to be one and a half miles from school. And grades seven through 12, it's gotta be two miles from school. So you're walking. We have no walkers. So, and I think that when we got the busing, I think somewhere in, it was my understanding, that the policy for when we went district-wide, when we went regional, we had to pick everybody up.
Because they're like sidewalks.
Are you talking about the walkers and ri, the...
The walkers and riders.
EEAA.
EEAA, right. So I think that the, I think our regional agreement with the state, as far as buses go, is that with the carrot? Is different than this.
I believe you're right. And we don't have sidewalks. That's, that's the issue, obviously. Because you have to assume that walkers are going to be walkers.
Well, there'll be some walkers. I mean, there, there are some sidewalks.
Well, you have to go with that assumption. This is actually something that's been around for, like, since I was a kid, the, the two-mile.
Yeah, yeah, me too.
And all that.
Where I live, but, so that's gonna be coordinated with whatever we have.
Could you, I'm sorry, I should know, but what policy?
EEAA, walkers and riders. So the...
Is this part of a regional agreement?
The regional agreement?
Are you looking at the marked up copy one?
Uh, no, I'm on the, uh...
Yeah, the mark, that, that one's being limited. The EEAA is being...
Oh, is it limited? All right.
Yeah. So look, go to the marked up one. If you go to the marked up one, that, all the red marks are through that, because I can't even, I can't see that.
I was in post-changes.
No, it was not. Yeah, okay. No. So if you go to the marked up one, that, that's not the one that's recommended. Do you see it?
There aren't any changes on it.
Yeah, that's why it's in there. There's two, there's two sections. There's, or there's two, I might get that right here.
So if you look here, there's EEAA, walkers and riders, and it's all crossed out in red. That's the mask one with the distances.
Yeah, but where's, where's that in here? That one here?
Policy manual, Section E with markup.
Got it.
So that shows all the places where it changed.
Tom, you couldn't have made that? No, no. I just wanted you to see the original one. I guess, I guess in the future, maybe, if you just, just look at the one with the markups. Does that make more sense?
No, which is fine. I just have to refer. Yes.
Because we didn't want to, to have those specified?
Right.
Yeah. Do you have a problem with everyone being picked up, or do you have a problem with it being specified in the policy?
Oh, I, I had, if it was in there, it, it's a total change to what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
So that's why we decided to...
Just a point of clarity.
Just a point of clarification, there's nothing about buses in the agreement except for the district will pick up people near their house.
Well, is that the district agreement or the agreement with the state?
District agreement. School transportation shall be provided by the district and cost thereof shall be portioned to the participating towns. That's all there is that relates to buses.
So there's nothing in there that we can't charge for busing? You can't
Charge for busing?
It's in the agreement right there, it's in proportion to the towns.
Okay, that's a whole nother discussion for us. Whole nother year.
The whole thing is, we cannot, because we're a district.
Right.
That's the law.
So why are we talking about that? It's not part of the policy.
That's all it is, is, no, I thought we had, I thought we were having kids walk. When the one I was reading
Okay, but we don't, so we cleared that up. So we're good to go.
Right.
Okay, good.
Was that the only one?
I have a compliment, kudos, whatever. E E A J, for those who drop kids off, and it's a February morning, Monday morning, and you're in line for 15 minutes, it gets really cold when you shut your car off because you can't idle on that line. You can't put your heat on. So for those people, I will say thank you.
All right, and we're moving on. Would you like to make, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, well, I move that we approve section E of the policy manual in form.
With the exception of
Right. The exception of, yes, thank you very much.
E F D.
Thank you. E F D, meal charge policy.
Yay.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Any more questions? Those in favor. It's unanimous, we're moving on. Thank you, thank you, thank you, budget.
E F D.
I mean, budget.
Yep.
Policy. I love you, budget, too, but thanks, policy. Budget and warrant, recommended reports.
Yeah.
What is this for?
For
No, we'll sign, is this for this discussion?
No.
Okay, so right now, we're looking at budget and warrant recommended reports. Who's discussing that?
Thanks for getting your trust.
Is there any discussion on this? I'm going to take it off the agenda. Who's discussing this? Who put this on the agenda?
Or it should be on the agenda.
Are you going to discuss it?
I will take responsibility for putting it on there, even though I didn't quite put it on there for this particular agenda. However, it is a good thing to discuss because we need to get this clarified and done so that, moving forward, we have So we've got the corrective action plan. We've got policy that's being put in place to address the corrective action plan. And that gives, you know, the, whatever, the framework for protocol to be built. And now comes the reporting. And it would be good if we had a consistent reporting structure so that there's an expectation that's built in for both the school committee and for the administration, as far as what they're doing on a daily basis, monthly basis, et cetera. They know what to do, when to do, how to do. The nine item paper that you see there actually was modified. So I think, I'd like to talk about the modifications, and then perhaps we can discuss, and then take a vote on it at some point, okay? So one, two, and three are all standard, right? So it's quarterly report, which we get now, a year-end report, details some of the items that we need in the year-end report based on the forensic audit. These are also things that can be fluid, too, right? So you can expand or contract those year-end reports based on what you see the need to be. But they do address, again, the recommendations for the forensic audit. Going to item number four, we actually have that set up as, that was a well, actually, the student activities report we get, and that's a year-end that we're looking at that. There is a missing report that's in here, and it was, oh, it's, okay. It's down on nine, special needs report. It's really, we would do pupil services report out. And that would give the detailed information with regards to pupil services, everything from circuit breakers to whatnot that would come in on that. I'm going to jump back for a second. We also have a facilities report, capital projects report, which we get. But because this has been so active over the last year, we kind of get lost when we've got at the beginning of the year, we've got things done on. And then there's, like, you were even talking about other major things. And if we have, like, a quarterly report out, we can really keep track of what's going on and, you know, circle back on things a lot easier. And then lastly, because technology is supposed to be coming a really key factor in the district in the future, especially with this budget pushing forward and the proposed assistant superintendent, having a technology report that addresses a lot of the concerns that we as a school district and the administration would set up as targets or goals. And we can see actually how these things are being done, monitored, et cetera. Again, on like a annual or even, you know, semi-annual quarterly basis. However, we see fit. But these are the items. It's actually only seven that we have. So I'd have to figure out which ones were actually being removed from here.
So you mentioned the capital projects report is quarterly, but not here. It says annuals, are you proposing that it's quarterly?
I think that's worthy of discussion as to where it is. Right now, we get something that's, like, Rob came out and made his annual report, which is right around the budget time.
Yeah.
But it's good. And this is just me throwing this out there, not that we had this conversation in B and W. But if we have it done on a quarterly basis, it really, instead of having this one thing, we can chunk things out and follow up and find out where we are, where certain things, are they on target, running behind, whatever. And it just, it just creates not just the accountability, but the visibility as to what's going on. And I think beyond us, even for the towns or whatnot, it's a real handy tool for them to be able to work with.
Yeah. And the technology report, that would be something that would fall into
Well, it's going to be a part of the ongoing working with the assistant superintendent because he or she will oversee that then.
Right, so as you're rolling that out, and it's something big, like technology, there's a lot going on. If you're doing a quarterly report for the fiscal element of the district, it may be worthy if the school committee determines for there to be like a quarterly technology report, how are things rolling out, what's going on, what's taken, again, monitored, we're able to circle back with things and so forth. And it really justifies, or helps to justify, the big spend and the initiative that's taking place.
Kathy.
Yeah, so Neil, in the November 8th iteration of this, where we called a much larger list down to seven
Right.
reports, the revolving account and special revolving fund report were put together under number three in here.
Right.
The special
This is the older, this is the pre-cold version. We went from like 20 down to nine.
Actually 12.
And then
Twenty's good.
Well, 20 in the summertime. It was actually 21 in the summertime that we started with at the offsite.
Right, right.
But we went to whatever, 12, then nine, then seven. Because we did merge.
Yep.
So I have the actual seven. And unfortunately, that's not here, so I will get that up. And then as far as what we actually want with the reports, I mean, we're happy to make recommendations, but it's really up to the school committee to design the contents of that report. We can, we can give our opinion as to what would be good for guidance with that based on the C A P. But what I'm saying is, some of the information you have, you may not find to be extremely useful, and you may desire other information along the way. So it may be a fluid, you may have that quarterly report, but the contents of it may change over time.
That makes sense, though.
You know, for example, like the capital, like, I understand what you're saying about the capital plan. And last year, you're right, last year and this year, both years have been active. But I see that plateauing, quite frankly, you know. Not at the high school, it's like plateau at the high school. But the other buildings, like, you know, I think that we're getting them all into a really nice place right now. And we've got a nice rhythm going, we've got preventative maintenance plans in place. That doesn't mean that stuff isn't going to happen, I mean, I know that it does. But I think that we've really taken care of that glut that was, the issue that was up there.
And then they'd be really short reports. But then, when, a good point is the high school. You know, you probably want to add one at that point in time with whatever's going on, with the quarterly or monthly, or you're probably going to do continuous updates on that.
So disposition, annual? That makes sense?
Disposition.
Yeah, the surplus?
We took that out.
Took that out.
You took that report out?
That would go in the
Potter?
No, I don't think that's going to help at the moment. There we go.
Those are the allergies I passed you.
Yeah. The
The year-end disposition, ah, there we go. The year-end disposition, you can't keep me down. The year-end disposition surplus report, I think we rolled into the year-end report.
Really?
Well, why not?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, because we really just do it at the year-end, to be honest with you.
Yep, that makes sense. So maybe, do you folks, I know, don't, well, do you folks want to make a final recommendation on the frequency of the reports? Because I know that you mentioned quarterly, Neil. And if the, we don't have to have the discussion right now, unless people want to. But if you folks have any other recommendations, like the report that you just mentioned and a couple of the column headers or something like that, you don't have to build the report. But just to meet with Pat and maybe have some recommendations on what those column headers would be, rather than it come to the full school committee and we end up with 30 headers. That would be
We'd love to put that on the agenda, wouldn't we, for the next, the next meeting?
You would?
I think this is a work in progress, and it'll take weeks and months to actually solidify what reports are desirable.
You know what?
I mean, we have a, we have a form, we have a shell to fit the reports into. And then we can actually work on, are we satisfied with the contents of a particular report or not?
But I don't think it's necessary to boil the ocean, do you?
Not as a committee, we just need to say, you have these certain reasonable reports, and then try to figure out the detail of them later.
But I also think that the recommendations that you're going to be making are things that you believe that the school committee needs to see without taking the business manager's function and recreating it. So I guess maybe I'm not understanding, because
If, if I could, so, so right, so I think Mark's talking about creating the shells. These would be the shells, right, the content. So we do have a little bit of what
Oh, good.
of what the content would be. We could talk a little more detail about that at B and W. And I think Mark's right in the respect that, the way I, the way that I see this working out organically over the future is, each year, B and W would take a look at that reporting structure and determine the contents
If it's useful, yep.
of what should be in there and what might be tweaked or modified.
Right.
And then report out to the school committee, right? So it actually never is static, it's always
But that makes sense, that makes sense. And I would, we would, I think you would all expect that, right? That it's not, it's not like, this is the report, and this is how it's going to be because it doesn't serve, if it's not serving, it needs to adjust.
That's exactly right.
Right, and there may be a report that we don't need that's here. Or there might be another one that we find that we do need, who knows?
Right.
So, yeah, I think that's
You have a starting point.
Right.
And the point is to create normalcy for both the expectation on the school committee, but also expectation for the business office and so forth.
And predictability.
That's right.
Yeah, exactly.
I think too, I think as the B and W committee, you've been very self-reflective. As we've worked through, like, I'm looking back over the last year and a half and said, yeah, I don't know if this really quite worked, or if that, or maybe this was too much information, or maybe this wasn't. I mean, you've done that as a subcommittee inside already. So I would, I would agree completely with where you're approaching this right now.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thanks, so you'll come back?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah?
So how do you want to handle the voting on this process? Do you want to, do you want to vote for the shell and bring the contents forward? And then decide, yeah, these are the contents that we would like, the suggested contents of it? Or do you want both done at once?
On it, I mean, I'm going to throw it out to you folks and see what you think personally. I think just voting on what they are is the important component. And then the detail of what's in those, we can work that out. I don't know that that has to be voted on, because then if you ever do change that report, you got to revote it, you can't really have the fluidity that you're looking for.
Right. Right, no, that's how I see it. So we used to call things silos, remember, a few years ago?
Yep.
And so these would be kind of like silos.
Yep.
Or bags.
Or do we
Or boxes.
Or do we need to vote on, are we just agreeing that these are the reports that we want?
Yeah, so I would vote, my, again, I would recommend a vote to create the stability.
Okay.
And I think
Predictability.
is the predictability over, over the years.
Yep.
Okay, so it depends on, somebody's different in this seat or whatever, they're still the same report structure, and you're not reinventing the wheel. You might look at this and say, you know what, we want to reconfigure this a little bit. But you've got something to work with, rather than starting from scratch. It's a huge time saver.
Right.
And I think it's also, a lot has taken us to get to this point. And we're using things like the forensic audit, the corrective action plan, et cetera, upon which we're basing this. If we don't keep that, then we're going to lose really the rationale behind why we put this in place.
So why don't we do this, unless somebody has another opinion? Why don't you folks go into B and W, come back with this list of reports, and just finalize your recommendation on frequency for each one? And we can vote on that.
Sure.
And then give us a couple of headers to get Pat started. I mean, she's already got some, you're all going to have those discussions. And then the actual, what the insides of the report may change, we won't vote on that because we do want the fluidity that you folks are talking about. How does that work? So can we do that, or we have to do that at the next meeting?
Yep.
Oh, Lord.
So one way to look on it is that we're creating the obligation for both the school committee as well as the administration to figure out what works for everybody. And that's just an agreement that we have work to do since we agreed to the report.
I think it's a great stabilization factor, I really do.
The constructs that are being put in place are really impressive. So thank you for your work, guys, thank you. All right, moving on. Assistant superintendent job description, Kathy.
Okay. The U of personnel subcommittee met on Monday to review the changes to this job description based on the school committee's input to superintendent Clancy at our last meeting. And so what you have for you are, is the revised job description. And the personnel subcommittee did vote to recommend to the school committee that we accept the How's that, unanimously? Unanimously accept the revised job description.
Do you want to kind of give a quick overview of what changed in it? Do you remember?
I don't have the edits.
I do have, yeah, I do. So we, if you take a look at the second paragraph, the second paragraph starts, the assistant superintendent directs work for instructional integration. So we added that word, that was one of the things that you were looking for when we left. Also, when we took a look at the same paragraph, the sentence that starts, I guess it's the second sentence, the assistant superintendent supervises and works in conjunction with technology at teaching and learning sped departments to assure continuity of, and we added, effort and alignment and strong communication. Down below in the bottom paragraph, we took out the word technology on the one, two, three, fourth line, where it says to share technological expertise with, because we thought it should be all staff, not just technology staff. And then there was a sentence there that we felt was ineffective, and that sentence has been taken out. The sentence was, such alternatives to these qualifications as a superintendent may find appropriate. And we removed that sentence. And those were the key changes.
Yep.
There's actually many more. You just mentioned the changes for personnel. You're changing a lot from the last meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. But this is the one that personnel is recommending for approval. So we're going to open it up for questions. Any questions? Neil?
Okay, so I'll probably have more than one. But I'm going to preface this with historical background that a lot of us know about. But I'm going to preface this with historical background that a lot of us know about. Um, we had a position, um, still maybe on the books, I don't know. Um, but, the issue was, we had a lot of hats that were included in that particular position, but, um, it wasn't necessarily monitored as far as which hats were worn and which hats were really the priority, so some people had, um, maybe a, a vision that, that, you know, A, hat A was, was really where everything should be focused, when really other people had, well, we're going to do hat C, and that's where we're really going to focus on. Um, we, as a school committee, lose complete control over, you know, we have that control, um, with the superintendent, with the goals and, and the district plan and so forth. How do, or what, personally, I would like to see, and I think that the success, because this, this is really, for me, this technology aspect is, is the V key element, um, that needs to, technology in teaching and learning. Um, and, and that, that creates this mesh and fills that, I would call it a void, but fills, it, it it is, is a brick in the wall, right?
I'm not sure what you're-
Like, where, where I'm go- I, I'm not sure, I'm trying to put my, my words around it.
Good, because I'm feeling better about that.
So I mean, like, how do we, how do we make sure that that stays the, the focus? Because again, because when, when, when when we put forward district measures for your superintendent measures, we can go back and forth and give feedback and say, you know, meets, needs.
I can do this one.
Right, but I don't want to run into that situation again where we get all these hats, and really it's only one hat that's being worn, and the other ones are being kind of blown off.
This function, the only way to ensure that the focus stays on this function is to make the intent of the work part of the superintendent's annual review.
Right.
And goals.
Right, but that is what you're saying now.
Well-
What keeps that, what keeps that a year or two years-
Consistent ten, twenty years.
Exactly, so what, what element keeps it in there?
You know, you know, and so you have to understand, he's not, this is not-
No, I know, I totally get that.
Okay.
This is, yeah, this is not, this is, this is the, the role, not the individual.
This is the, this is kind of like the PTSD, okay, so-
Yeah, but no.
No, I'm not, I'm not, hey!
Yeah.
Okay, but, I, I, you know, everybody can jump in on this. I personally feel like it is the school committee's responsibility. Every member of the seat, the butts in the seat. It's every member, whether it's this school committee, or next year, or five years, or ten years, it's their responsibility to do this. If you're asking, we need to put a policy in place, I don't know that I would be able to agree with that, because I don't know what that would be. But I really feel that at some point, and I know where you're at, because we went through it, a handful of us went through it together, um, I really feel that the people that sit on the school committee are adults. They are responsible to their communities, and it's the community's responsibility to hold them accountable. So for me, it's like, I can't go be, I, I just think that's where it lies. Cathy?
We actually do have a policy that says the school committee, um, only the school committee can create or get rid of positions. And the school committee is responsible for approving certain job descriptions, and this is one of them. And I think that, um, you know, unfortunately, you weren't at our last meeting with this, exactly what you're saying. Spent a lot of time discussing it, fine tuning it, so that is indeed the focus. What happened before, I, I think one of the attorneys we worked with accused us of abdicating our responsibility, which meant that the school committee wasn't following policy. So this school committee is, we're focused on it. We hold the superintendent accountable, Lorraine is absolutely right when she says that we don't supervise this person, but we evaluate the superintendent. And, um, there was another, uh, position, I think, where we had the same conversation, um, last year. So whatever the goals are that the superintendent works with this Assistant Superintendent on, the superintendent is ultimately responsible. And I don't know that, I don't think I'm going to be here in, in twenty years, but, um, you know, we work for the integrity of the system when you're here, that's all we can, um, um, guarantee. And it's up to future school committees to maintain the fidelity of the system.
Are you worried about scope creep?
Hugely.
Right, well, so were we, and I was flipping out about it, and Brooke and I had a couple of conversations about it, because it was like, this position can't become, and we even talked about this, a catch-all
Right.
for anything and everything that needs to get done, kind of like, you know, I need a right hand. It, I think that the school committee, um, approved re-energizing this position and retooling this position specifically for those functional areas. And I, I really do feel, but it's only my opinion, so I'm going to ask others to jump in as well. I really do feel that this job description gets us where we need to be, and I was really difficult. Um, it was hard for me to wrap my head around what we did have. I'm much more comfortable now, because it's focused there, with the, um, safety net of ensuring that in Brooke's goals, there's reasonable expectations that will be performed by this function. I mean, Brooke's going to have things in her goals, but you can't be like fifty people. So, and we know that, and then it's the school committee's responsibility to ensure that those goals are not only met, but that they're continued year to year. That's the school committee's responsibility. So I hear what you're saying, it's like, how do we put controls in place for when we're all gone?
Yeah, and it's not to be like overloading on something, but it's, it's
It's integrity.
not to sound offensive, but it's to kind of like look for the, the lowest common denominator of what we could see, like, based on past, and say, okay, if there's something in there that just at least brings it to people's attention, so that it doesn't get lost over time.
I also think the culture of this district has changed, and I don't think that that control and lack of allowing the visibility into processes, business processes, would be tolerated right now by, not just by those that work in the district, those on the school committee, but by the communities. I don't think our communities, I mean, our communities have evolved with the school district over the past three years. I don't think they would allow that amount of control and lack of visibility. I just don't, I mean, we've seen, you know, we're pushing more and more information out there, and at first people get nervous and they're upset, because they don't understand, what have you been keeping from us, and then they realize, oh my gosh, I don't even know where to start. So that's kind of the good news, and that's the culture that's been created, but I want to hear what others have to say, if you have concerns about it, Lynn.
One of the conversations that kept going around was, um, we added some positions, and Brooke's going to report out on them, and although this is the same title, it's a brand new position.
Mm-hmm.
So, she's going to do a report out, okay, and spend a year, you know, still react, did it work? You know, did we, you know, like, did you add this, was it one, you know, you know, we added them, you know, for specific reasons? So we asked them, okay, are you going to be able to have an outcome at this, you know, at the end of the year? Will it show that, okay, this person was hired to do this, and it, this is what they did? And what does it do for the district? And I'm hoping that those we hold out will help solidify what this is. And keep it in line.
So, can you say that? I'm just, so position responsibilities, I mean, in my mind, um, and again, it's just me speaking personally, but I would love to see something in that says something about articulating the vision of the, uh, technology initiative within the vision, within the district. I mean, there's nothing that just lists that, it just says, do technology, whatever, but really part of the challenge I think we have right now is actually articulating the vision, what, what is it?
Yeah, we've, we've had lots of, you can see Lynn giggling here, we've had a lot of conversation on that. And that's actually, I see that as, I don't think that that needs to be articulated in here. That would be the very, one of the very first things that, that we, we work on.
Isn't that a sentence?
No, the vision of, the vision of the district shouldn't be in a job description.
It's the vision of articulation.
It shouldn't be in a job description.
It's, uh, it says, in, in-
Implementing, implementing the vision, yeah.
Well, so, well, in order to implement it, you got to create it.
Why wouldn't defining and articulating be within a job description? I'm just asking you, I'm just-
Defining a vision would be in a job description?
Uh, uh, the vision of the, the actual technology plan, yeah.
That's not, the, the job, I, I'm assuming, I'm going to drag the HR director up here, but I'm assuming that a job description is indicating what the functional areas are of the individual that would eventually fill the position and the qualifications they need in order to achieve those functional, the, whatever I just said.
I'm naively asking you, I'm just asking.
I don't think that a vision, no, I know, I don't think you're being flippant, I really don't. I just don't think that a vision statement belongs in a job description, because if you're going to do that with one, you might as well do it with all of them, and then you're going to have to, you, we, you, you, are going to have to ensure that every single job description that has a, it just becomes a different document.
I, I think the other thing too is, is the, one of the reasons I would get some pushback on that is just because that's, I, I don't want to say one and done, but that's like one of those tasks that we're expecting. This job description is expected to live beyond one year.
Sure.
So what, what you're looking for, what, my vision is that that, that particular task will be done before Christmas. So I, I, I wouldn't put it in a job description, because that's just, when you come to the table and say, now, what's, what do you expect from this job, that's-
So you might set that as like a
A goal, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Would it be fair to say that a lot of Neil's concern would be under the word lead, as in, lead the ongoing digital integration efforts? So he can encompass a lot of that preliminary, um, visioning in the lead verb.
Are we word smithing, and is it necessary?
No, I'm not word smithing, I'm just saying that maybe what Neil is concerned about is already in the document.
Oh, it could be, I'm just asking some questions that, you know, I don't-
I mean, it's a key leadership position, so I think it, some of this just goes without saying, some of it's just in who you're hiring, right? Sorry.
I'm good, Susan, sorry.
And, and just to kind of go back to that whole superintendent evaluation piece, like, if you think about that instructional leadership umbrella-
Standard one?
Yeah, that, it would, it would fall under your responsibility to make sure that they were
Mm-hmm.
leading in a way that you think is appropriate, and obviously it's your responsibility to follow the job description that we agree upon.
I'm very comfortable with where we've landed, uh, on all of this.
It took a while to get there.
A long while to get here, and I'm very comfortable where we're at right now.
My last question is just on the grant proposal, right, I mean, are they going to spend time writing the grant proposals themselves, or?
No, but some, some of the work that, that's done within those units helps to oversee the grants. And so it's like, we need a point person to say, you know, I, I see that as part and part, they, they need to understand how the money flows in and out of those units.
Sure.
So that's, I, I don't see this person sitting down and actually physically writing the grants, but I see them as, as a key point person, which we kind of don't have right now. And it's kind of scattered, and I'm not, I'm not caring for that.
That was one of the things that I brought up, was why are we having them waste their time on, they have such a huge job.
Right.
I didn't understand that was the intent.
Okay, cool.
Either.
Yeah.
But I was with you on that.
Thank you all for putting up with me.
With what?
Putting up with me.
You?
Yeah.
Oh, cut it out, I'm going to cry, go ahead.
They haven't heard from me yet.
No, we haven't.
Organiz- sorry. Organizational scope, position responsibilities, I have absolutely no problem with. But I'm going to focus again on the job qualifications. And I understand that if we put in the, the requirement that this candidate have experience with digital learning, that we narrow our field, because there's not that many of them out there. But I don't think that that is an insurmountable task. I really feel that as a job qualification, this individual, who we want to head up the digital learning program for the district, have some experience hands-on in that field.
Okay, I can get behind that. I'm going to make a suggestion, and then we're going to either go with it, have another suggestion, not go with it, but rather than belabor. Um, experience as an educator and adminis- licensure, assistant superintendent, assistant superintendent, experience as an educator and administrator, experience with, um, curriculum and staff development, training in a variety of current assessment tools, ability to collect, analyze, synthesize data, ability to efficiently and effectively use technology. Maybe that's where you want to say, experience with designing digital.
Or not, just experience with digital learning systems, either as a, I'm not specifying whether it's a designer, a practitioner, a leader. I'm just saying that this is a person that has to have some digital learning experience in their background.
I almost think since, could I say something?
Oh, sure you can.
Since, um, I mean, I know, in a way, it's a developing field or area. Um, so if you're saying that they have experience, um, it becomes, I think that experience becomes obsolete pretty quickly in the area of technology. So it's more about, I think, I think the vision is more important personally than of where, where, how the technology is going to be used and where it's headed, and then as things change, now?
You seem like you have a direct rebuttal.
I do, but I, but I'm not going to tell them.
Oh, no, no.
So I, I get, I absolutely, um, get where Steve's coming from, and I don't think that technology is in education is frankly so new that we wouldn't find anybody who had some digital learning experience, because
No, I think that you're-
It's been around for, you know, since I was in the classroom too, um, years ago. And, so I, I don't think that's, that's as much of an issue, but I, I do agree with, with Susan that, you know, when when I look at districts that have done technology implementation well, and have been really successful at changing practice and student outcomes, it wasn't because they had, like, a, a tech leader in their district, they had a visionary leader.
That's right.
And it was somebody who was able to bring in the right people, and able to marshal, and say, here's our vision, we are going to focus as a district on personalizing instruction, and here's how we're going to get there, and this is the way that digital learning supports everything that we do. And that was how they got, it wasn't, you know, because they had somebody that came in and said, my vision is we're going to buy seventy-five thousand iPads, you know, Los Angeles. And not have a plan behind it, you know, it was a vision for learning and a vision for improving student outcomes that is served by technology. So I, I, I agree with Steve, and I do think they're, I don't, I feel like that's in there though, the digital learning piece. But I also agree with Susan that it's really, we need somebody who can see the big picture, and pull the right people together, and bring out those pockets of excellence that we already have, and replicate them
So are we, so based on what you're both saying, and they're both valid points, are we micromanaging this too much? Neil?
So, I actually agree with Steve, um, on this, and, and the, the rationale is, is digital actually is very big, it's very big in the private sector, it's, it's very big here. Um, and there are all kinds of digital roles right now, and when you private sector, when you have an issue that's going on, and somebody says, oh, and I have digital backgrounds with it to help meet that need, that excites people, because it is this paradigm shift that's occurring with businesses and how they're forward-facing to the, the public, but we also need to be doing the same thing too. I go and I think, not only this, but you, the digital aspect can also be used very, uh, very effectively in communication across the district, the parents, towns, et cetera. So if we have something not digital required, but perhaps digital experience, or I would go with digital experience preferred, um, not like a requirement. So it doesn't scare somebody away, but preferred.
I'm fine with that, would that satisfy everyone, to move this forward? Okay, let's put it in here and then bless it and vote on it, and let these people go look for somebody to do this job. So it's digital experience preferred?
I would say digital experience because it's going to, digital learning, right? It's going to fall within the sector.
Yep.
Experience with digital teaching and learning?
Yes.
Experience with digital teaching and learning?
That could be anything.
I think you could even just pull it out right here, Brooke. You, I mean, experience as an educator and administrator, well, you darn well better. But experience
You could also put it just as a last qualifier, last sentence, experience with digital.
Well, I think they want it up at the front because that's what this is. So experience as an educator, administrator.
Okay.
Experience, and then put it right into this one.
Right into that, yeah.
Okay, it's in, we're good. Lynn has something. Okay.
Just one question about goal setting. In the next round of goals, personnel committee is the leading body to help generate that with the superintendents back here. So it's, I'm hearing that there's a supervision and reporting out and evaluation of key personnel. And so it sounds like that's an area that is desired in the coming years and maybe as a tradition to see that that is an aspect of our goals. Does that make sense?
No, I have no idea what you just said.
So I'm, I'm hearing, and one of the concerns people are having is how can we tell that our wonderful future assistant superintendent is doing what we wished and hoped? And I, I'm also hearing that that also applies to some other key positions. And there's a way, it's a way that we don't hear as well as we ought to.
I think
Asking if that makes sense as a
Mark, I think, I think that the functional, the, the key, what do you want for the district goes in Brooke's job.
What do you call it?
Your goals. But I, again, I think we're starting to get down into the weeds and we're starting to like manage people's functional areas right now. I'm going to table this discussion.
I see that is falling under.
We're going to stop, we're going to table this and we're going to vote on this. And then we're going to move on unless there is something that's so burning you can't even take another breath without saying it. Neil, of course, he's got something burning.
But so Mark is touching on the true PTSD thing here. Because if we have somebody that's in a position, again, role, not individual, we assume that there's an evaluation that's being done each and every year. If there's no evaluation that's being done or there's no evaluation on record, that actually becomes difficult for the school committee or whatnot and can actually really affect the culture of the district very quickly. And so I guess my question is kind of, I'm tagging off of Mark's thing. How, how are we, like, like would the superintendent report out, hey, I did an eval? Something as simple as that, I did an eval. It's on record that the superintendent's saying that they did an eval. Do you know what I mean? It, like, how do we make sure that there is actually the evaluation that takes place? Is there, is there any way? Because I know there's, you, you don't affect that publicly. That's all it's personal. And I'm not asking for that, but just the acknowledgement that there is, that there is the eval that takes place.
I understand what you're saying, Neil. I think right now we are so off the reservation that how, how do you know that the evals are being done? I'm not going to, how do you know that teachers are doing their lesson plans appropriately? How do we know that the food services director is cataloging, you know, lunches that aren't being sold instead of giving them away? I understand what you're saying and I, I get it because we lived it. But I think that we have to kind of let go a little bit and trust that they're doing their jobs. And I don't blindly trust anybody. But I think I personally, just my opinion, I've seen enough to know that when we're told something's going to get done, it gets done. And if it doesn't get done, we call them to task and we have. And I'm, oh, I can't, I don't think, I don't think we're going to get to the philosophical answer of how are we going to make sure that everything's getting done that should be getting done? Because we've got to come back up to this level and say, if this position, there are functional things that this position needs to deliver, like a comprehensive five-year strategy. Whatever those high-level things are, that's what goes in Brooke's goals. I don't think that we can talk about evaluations right now because that's either comes up at goal setting and we say, we want a report on, how many did you do? Just give us a number. You got them done or you didn't get them done. We can do that. But I don't think it belongs here and I don't know how, and I'm not putting you off and I'm not saying it's not important. I just want us to focus back on here. And so, yeah.
Just remember that we have to tie it into the goals of the superintendent.
Understood.
That's the key for it. Not, I'm not telling you, but I'm just saying that's the key for this work.
Right, I mean, we've been talking about, we, you and I talked about that even before we got into personnel. Yes. Would someone like to make a motion?
I believe that we accept the job description to be superintendent, assistant superintendent of schools as amended to
Any second? Thank you, Steve. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous. You going to cry?
It's been a long haul.
It has. But you know what, Brooke? I, I really think that half of this committee, this was, this was, this was a very big, important, significant change. And it's like, okay, just take that old dusty robe and throw it in the corner and burn it. We're ready to move.
Really true. I'm really excited about where this is.
Well, you better find someone darn good. Okay. Because, and so wrapping up this portion, folks. So again, just a reminder, the school committee provides advice and consent on this position, advice and consent. So we'll look at the job description. We'll look at the individual that the superintendent brings forward. Then we'll look at their resume, advice and consent. Okay? Moving on. Subcommittee reports. Mr. Dossie.
Yes, so
Do you have a report?
Yeah, we had a BMW subcommittee meeting today. It was quite pleasant. We, what did we discuss? We, we kind of, we talked about the future. We're kind of in the, we're in the mud season, as they say, up north. There's just not a lot going on right now.
Okay, so we can move on.
But Mark, is there anything that you want to throw in there?
Trying, guys, I'm trying.
That's fine.
Okay. And Ms. Codyanne?
Just that we approved the job description that was our focus about meeting.
And Kath, I'm sorry, just looked at you, Susan. Kathy, Susan, do you have anything more for policy?
We met today, finished the last section.
Awesome.
Yep, I know. And we also went over all the health policies and determined who needs to be invited back to meet with us to kind of
Wrap that up.
Yeah, wrap that up. And unfortunately, Dorothy's unable throughout the month of May. So we were hoping that BMW, somebody could come and meet with us June 13th.
Shanti, I. I see their jobs are
We'll have a new subcommittee at that point, right?
Kathy, yeah.
Well, committee isn't for election. One of whom is going to
So, so maybe before then, here's something to do to get you out of the mud. Like, I wasn't there that, that day where you had the joint
Right.
Policy.
Right.
My understanding is there are some unresolved issues still?
Yeah, well, we don't know what those unresolved issues are necessarily. Do we, Kathy? You were the, you were the taker.
I was at the last one, I was at the first one.
Well, that, that's
No, when we, when you met
The initial one.
Dorothy and
Yes.
Yeah, oh, there was only one, I think.
There was only one, I submitted jokes on the, so I'd have to go back and look at the notes.
Yeah, I just didn't know if I remembered.
I'd have to go back and look at the notes.
I, I think there were, but it was things that you guys were, my recollection is you guys were going to check out policy and see if there were any policies that applied to those things that were a little fuzzy.
Gotcha, okay.
So there was two meetings. There was one that I wasn't at and there was one that you were at. The one that you were not at, Dorothy brought responses.
Dorothy wasn't there, right.
Okay, so that's the one that I was at and Dorothy, you're
So I brought responses to questions. And then there was two, there was a few issues with policy D. Something in D, yeah, DB that you all as budget and Warren, I think we're going to take one more look at to see whether the things that Dorothy had found sort of answered. There's a few questions that Dorothy had some specific, oh, this shows up in this one or this shows up here. So I think most of those issues
So if I get that, if I get those issues to you before
We would be so happy to look at them.
So you guys are going to
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and then I just, one really, really quick, sorry.
No, don't, don't be sorry.
There are three sections that are ready to come to the full school committee. One is J, which is super long, probably going to need two meetings for. And then the other two are K and L, which are short and can be done in one meeting. So I don't know, based on the next few agendas, if
The ninth is pretty open.
Okay, so should we start J then?
I think you should.
Okay.
Yep. And then bring forward the other one from tonight?
Yes, yep.
Yep. Okay. How's that? And then if you could get those in the packet by the beginning of Oh, no.
J's really long. So, yeah, I will do my best to get it.
Why don't you do the shorter ones then first?
And make the
Which will give you more time to compile.
Whatever, just take the time to use the main nine meeting.
If we do the shorter ones first, I can maybe give you three weeks with J.
Okay.
Right?
That sounds good. All right. That sounds good.
It was DB.
Yeah.
Because DB doesn't apply to, to really the elements of our district.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. All right, Elise, did you have a CPAC meeting? Okay. Any correspondence we need to be aware? Also, folks, make sure when you do get correspondence, if it's not coming through the NRSC email mailbox to get it over to Alita so she can track it. Consent agenda. We're assuming the meeting minutes of April 11th, December 18th. Warrants of April 27th, 2018 are good to go? Yep, we will. Items for, to be considered for next agenda. We've got the executive session minutes review, so before anybody leaves this current committee. And we're in a good place with that. So those are all coming forward. Yeah, did I send you January 3rd?
We're waiting for it, we do from
Mike?
Yep.
Okay. And then superintendent's evaluation. Mark, I really need that like tomorrow. And then the school committee, oh, well, that's, no, that comes after. And then one of the recommendations that came up from personnel was to do a report out on the effects and the results of the AP at the high school. And what was the other
Custodial.
Custodial ads. And the custodial ads. And the custodial ads. So we're going to close the loop on those positions that we funded for last year.
Is that going to be the ninth?
Yes, if we could.
I think it's on the 23rd right now, is it not?
No, it's not on there at all. For the custodi, for the, for the AP report?
AP and custodial, the new positions.
It's not, it's not on there at all, so it's
Yeah, no, it needs
No, we just, we're going to do it at personnel, but then it seems more appropriate for here. So that's a new item.
Yes, please. So it's report out on new position, our FY '18 new positions.
Yeah.
Probably the easiest way to
I, I wouldn't be specific.
We want to vote on recommended reports for next agenda.
End the vote on the recommended reports. Thank you, perfect. Good, good, good. We're getting a lot done. Can't believe that we're getting a lot done. All right, I think that is it. Would someone please make a motion to adjourn?
I would adjourn.
Second.
Thanks, Kathy, thank you. Steve, all those in favor? It's unanimous, 7:42. Thank you, sir Bob.